And we're gonna get started. I start first by we all stand and then in the votes and we need some pledges and then Commissioner Dixon's gonna lead us in an invitation.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, the zero symbol of perfect friendships among the United Nations.
Please pray with me. Dear my father, we just thank you so much for this day, Father God. We thank you for all of the people here. Lord, we just pray that you just watch over each and every one of us, guide our words, our thoughts and our actions. Father God, we are here to represent each and every person Roosevelt County, Lord, and I just pray for your blessing upon all of them. Lord, we pray that you bring us some rain, Lord, it is so much needed. But Lord, we thank you so much for all that we do have, Lord, and for all the people that we have. Lord, we love you, we thank you and praise you. We ask you to forgive us where we fail. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Most of us know each other, but I'd like to kind of start doing some introductions around the table here and Commissioner Bradrick, we'd start on you.
Veronica Cordova, City Council, Ward A. Tina Dixon, County Commissioner, District Four.
Oscar Robinson, County, City Commissioner, District, now you know where I am.
Shane Lee, the County Commissioner Chair, District Three.
Mike Miller, Mayor Pro Tim, and I represent Ward.
Travis, when I represent Ward C as well.
Brad, I'm excited. Commissioner Dushy, two.
Daniel Bowen, Councilmember Ward B.
Dennis Lopez, District One, County Commissioner, and sorry that I was a little late, just running in here. That's part of my life.
Jake, there's a warning.
City Commissioner.
General Saul, City Councilor for Ward D.
And before I turn it over to the Mission Chair, Mayor Jackson is not able to be here today and he asked that I read the following statement. Please accept my apologies, but I am unable to attend tonight's public meeting between the two entities due to a personal and unexpected emergency. Mayor Pro Tim Miller has the best interest of the city and the public in mind and will get them able to have discussions about negotiations. I'm confident that he will be able to speak on my behalf. I anticipate that we will be able to negotiate reasonably in the best interest of all of our residents and our respective entities. Thank you all for collectively gathering to establish a fair and reasonable support for both entities. My hope is that everyone comes to tonight's meeting has the best interest of the community at heart. After all, we are all Roosevelt County residents.
With that, Roosevelt County Chair, I would like to thank the City Councilors for inviting us tonight and trying to work through what we gotta get done to help every person in this county. And with that, I don't know what to say, but we don't get through like this month, so you kind of spoil on it.
We don't either.
Anybody out there gets hungry, we'll share, but I hope, I hope we can come to a good understanding tonight together and have a good, open dialogue between each and every one of us. I'll let you run the meeting.
Thank you, sir. You know, with that, Charlie and I met earlier today and kind of discussed how we thought we, we wanted this to go tonight. And as we advertise, the discussion is amongst us around this table right here. There's not going to be any public discussion tonight. There's not going to be any decisions made as we did advertise that we're going to make any decisions. We sort of agreed upon it. We're, if, if we're not wrapped up by seven, we're going to wrap up at seven. And we'll come back and, and finish up at another time, if, if that's necessary, which I believe probably we will have to come back and, and discuss after tonight. Anybody have any questions at this point? And I don't know whether, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll defer to Commissioner Savage. As, as you all recall, we we've had an agreement with the city and the county for a number of years since the mid eighties, since I believe the law enforcement complex was, was constructed and, you know, we have all law enforcement in there. We had magistrate judges there. And, you know, off and on, we think that, that we have, and we also have other agreements with regard to, I think, county detention and some other. So back, I believe it was in April, Roger, we Savage, myself, and our few managers, we sat down and started trying to start some sort of negotiation, uh, that these, or the particular one, as it relates mainly to the emergency services that the city provides. And we feel like that's one of the things that we, we provide that the county's not in a position to provide at this time, much like some other. We all know that we all have our own responsibilities to the residents of this county that are either statutory or morally responsible for each of our entities. And a- at that time, we presented in the negotiations, a proposal as it related to dispatch and fire and EMS, those being two, the, the more, we will, or something we provide that we feel like we could use some, some assistance on. What we offered at that point in time, as I, I think, hopefully I pointed out, was that was a starting point for some negotiations. Negotiations are a back and forth thing. And, you know, it wasn't cast in stone that if you don't do this, we're going to do this. I don't think we ever made any of those kind of statements. We don't intend to make any of those kind of statements. I know there's a lot of rumors been floating around that, you know, the city's going to stop the fire trucks at the, at the city events and we're going to cut dispatch work anybody that's on, for Dallas and, and I, I can assure you, none of those decisions have been made and hopefully will not ever have to be. So that's where we're at. And when the, when the Chair and I met earlier, uh, when we were talking about how we wanted maybe have this meeting conducted, worked out a lot of stuff right there. Uh, you know, we, we just, we as the elected officials need to have this dialogue. We need to realize that, you know, I was county manager for over five years. I, I appreciate the obligations of the county. Councilman Lopez has been a county commissioner a couple of different times. He, he thoroughly understands the responsibilities that you commissioners have that are a lot of them funded mandates and all. So that's, with, with that said, do you like anything better from previous meetings up to this point?
I think everything you said is absolute truth. We've met several times. Mrs. Hamilton and I have met, Mrs. Austin and Mr. Miller. All of our conversations have been congenial on both sides, very respectful. We've been trying to share data, share concerns. There's been no animosity in those negotiations in any way. So far, those, those meetings have been very, very professional, I feel like, for both sides. I think what Mr. Miller was telling you about, we're, we're all serving the same set of people. We've just got to figure out what resources, what money we have available, what we can spend and how we can use that to benefit everybody. And so we've been presented some data by the, by the city and it's been very helpful. I think it's a good start on where, where we need to go and providing this information, how we need to be, how the county needs to be supporting the city. At the same time, we receive data, but it is kind of a complicated situation. There's quite a bit of data to be analyzed and considered. And for a layman such as myself, with no prior experience with dispatch and P S A, that long detention, there are a lot of things. It takes a while to sort all that out. But we're getting there. I mean, I'm, I'm a lot more educated now than I was two months ago. But we're getting there and I think that we can work together and come up with an amicable solution, solve the problems for the benefit of all, all of our constituents, city and county. There are some concerns that I have, but I think that, you know, so far, I think we've been, been doing fairly well. We've had good relationships with the city that presented this with with a J P A that's, you know, a beginning J P A, gave us opportunity to respond and we're considering the data and trying to come up with a viable response. So I understand now, we're still in the middle of negotiations. Hopefully by the end of this month, we can come up with something solid. And get, that's our, that's our goal. But again, there's a lot of data to be considered. And it's obvious to me after receiving data from the city, that yes, the county needs to support the city. There are things that are happening in dispatch that we, we need to shoulder our part of the responsibility and finance that. We're not, we're not all to be freeloaders. We want to pay our share, but we just gotta be, figure out what our share is because we have a responsibility. If we do share a responsibility through our constituents, we spend our taxpayers' money, we need to be convinced in our mind that our decisions are valid. So we're in the middle of negotiations and I look forward to continuing.
Thank you. Um, you know, hopefully, everybody around here is kind of informed on where we've been and, and what's going on. So I, I think the, the dialogue now is that we, we ask questions. We try to, we try to issues that you have and can, or if not, that we can direct the people, that we can get you the information that you need or the resolve the issue. You know, I, I, I'm like Commissioner Savage and Commissioner Lee, I think everyone else. We can do this, this right here, one more, I'm more, I think that we can probably, we can probably really do a lot of good things for all the citizens of this county. And it's been too long since maybe we've all sit down and looked face to face at each other and said, hey, you know, we need to look up on this, or we need to look up on that, and we're aware of this issue because it came to me or I, you know, whatever. So, you know, at this point, I, I would just like to say, if anybody has any further comments or questions, that's what we're here for.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, go ahead.
Mike, I'm a lot like you on that. We need to sit down together. I know I'm coming out, but in all the years I've been a commissioner, I've always wanted to sit down with you guys and visit because when we go to Santa Fe and we're looking for funding for projects, you two understand this better. I mean, yeah, I go up there and I work for the county and that, but I could also go up there and say, hey, you know, my city is really in need of this help too. Where I would like to help out with y'all. This more dialogue building, I think is a good idea for us to work together when we go, because they're already working all up there together. We went up as a group sometimes to might help the county as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Welcome, everyone, and thank you guys for hosting this. I'd like to echo what Commissioner Savage said, you know, of course, he used the word that I don't like, freeloady. It was an in-kind service from back in the day. It really was, but back in the day was feasible. It was financially feasible and it was something, it was that report that we had, that relationship we had with county city back in the day. I think it happened in two thousand and two, Mike, whenever we did this last negotiation where it was an in-kind service. Well, since then, reality tells us that, you know, financially and everything else, we've got to be good stewards of the taxpayer money. We have to. We're obligated to that. All of us are in this room right now, all the elected officials. And with that, you know, we have to work together. And I've thrived to do that for years and years and years because this man right here to my left taught me well. And Shane said it best, you know, we need to go up there, whether it's through joint powers agreements or whatever we may do to prepare to go into Santa Fe. I've dealt with you a lot, Mr. Miller. You're one of my mentors, but, uh, we need to go up there and really have our good intentions in mind because you know what? People has power, but the elected officials is more power in Santa Fe. It really is. If we stick together and we drive to get a mutual project that we want in hand, we could do a lot. We could really do a lot at state level and federal level. Thank you.
Anybody that's got anything with this group? Maybe we'll be out here by six o'clock.
You know what? I'll go ahead. Okay, so, um, sorry, I'm not going to talk about Santa Fe, but, um, on this joint powers agreement, um, I didn't know a lot about, you know, how dispatch worked and all of that, you know, when we've made throw the ball around about how we're going to handle this or who's responsible for what. So I went and spent time at dispatch. I don't know how many of you all have ever been in there, but I went and spent a few hours down there at dispatch with them. They were super great, very cordial, showed me around, showed me what they did. I can tell you right now, that is a whole lot. That is a lot of stress. That is something that I couldn't do it. I couldn't sit there and do that day in and day out. And, you know, I would like to see however this comes out, I would like to see where we do not ever have only one person sitting in dispatch at any given time. We need two people in dispatch at all the time. I sat there and during the time that I was there, you know, calls would come in. It would be, you know, you'd think, okay, yeah, I could do this. All of a sudden, within a two-minute period, and I'm given a lot of, I'm given extra time, I'm sure there, there were five calls, bam, 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 bam. And it, their ringtones are all different according to what type of call it was. These were accidents and things like that, or domestic violence, things that needed attention immediately. If that one person would have been there by herself, like they have been in the past, you know, you put, you can't put people on hold. You can't just dismiss what's going on here to answer this next call. And I watched them double up and try to take all of these calls, and there was only two of them trying to take these. And like I said, you know, there's four or five calls coming in and two people, man, they've got a phone on one thing, a headset going, they're typing and they've got, I was so lost and confused on what was going on because there was just so much, and you know what? They handle it with such grace and just, they're so calm. It takes a special person to handle that. I don't think you're going to find a whole lot of people that can handle that and do that job. To man, how many ever dispatches. I think that we really need to focus on quality of dispatch and I think that we need to take the dispatchers into consideration when we're talking about all of these different things because, I mean, I'm glad that our, our fire chiefs are here, our, our fire chief, our, our sheriffs and things because I think it's important to have all of them to listen to what they have to say because we just know the outside. And until I went, I didn't have any idea. So there's a lot more to this than what we just see in us trying to make a decision. And I think we really need to consider all of the people and all of the things that are at stake here. It's not just some final little decision on paper of money, that it is people.
Commissioner Dixon, I, I appreciate that so very much because I've always advocated that the whole public safety system does not work. If, that dispatch is the key to that being that the whole emergency situation being successful with success, wow, it all starts right there. It all starts right there. And those are the most important even process and I really appreciate you.
I'm considered to be at a spin on this city council, but I just heard my friend Tina spend some money. And, uh, and I echo, and I, I echo what you just said. I'm glad that you said it. Now I can say Tina said we need to add another body to the dispatch unit. So, and as we continue to move forward, maybe the negotiated, I will take that into consideration and then see how the city and the county can get together. Then Oscar won't be the only one saying, let's spend money. Okay.
Thank you, Oscar.
Sorry. Yes. Uh, I'm gonna start off on a different situation here. When, when the city decided, or however it worked, we discussed this earlier, moved out and started their own dispatch. And we started dispatch in their own building. It wasn't in the county building. Our J P A was no longer relevant. It was a furnished spot. My whole problem, when we got our first letter of how much money was needed, I was like, oh my goodness, that was a lot of rent we had made. You know? Is that not, I mean, it was, it was way more than I even thought it was furnished. So that's why in the negotiation, they brought it back. I was like, well, I don't, I know in the county budget, we've been struggling for years and we've come to a point that we're doing a lot better than we were. So I do believe we can help, but the first initial money we was asked for was just, there was no way that could ever happen. That's why we're here today is to discuss.
With Mr. Chairman, you know, you mentioned, while we go back to San Fe and working with legislators, I, I don't think when you ask for money, you lowball it, do you? Okay.
Well, I know I don't ask for any more than my guys.
Sure. Yeah. I, I will say that, you know, from my, from my understanding that, that, that offer at will was based on numbers and percentages. Okay? And as we said, and we pointed out from our first meeting, that's a starting point. Okay? In negotiations, there's usually a counter offer and maybe another counter offer, then maybe a, you know, sit down and, and mediate and come to, come to some sort of decision. And sometimes you mentioned a couple of things that you would like to see when we were, you know, when we were talking about having this meeting. And those are the kind of things that need to come forward between now and, as Mr. Savage said, the end of July, and hopefully we can come, you know, we can come and have an agreement. And those are the sort of things that, you know, we feel like we need to bring in the agreement and yours, your entity agrees with it and our entity agrees with it. Well, that, that's fine, but you, you know, that's, that's, that's why, that's what we need to hear. We need to hear, look, just believe you me, our budget side also, that's, 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 we're, we're all.
We're a small group, you know.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we're always under fire from, from our friends in Santa Fe that kind of forget about us out here in local government. It seems like when, when they decide to do some sort of big moves in taxes, they, they taking our backs and not, you know, hold harmless and, and all those sorts of things that we're, that we're dealing with and continue to have to deal with. So, you know, hopefully what, what I hope we can do, whether we, about it here tonight, or we come back to, to, we sit down in our little group together, you know, if we want to add somebody to it, that's fine too, but, you know, give us a proposal and I'll share with what Commissioner Lee told me today. He said, you know, why can't we in dispatch, you know, why can't we have an advisory board that, that has some of the interested parties in there that can make suggestions and, okay? I mean, certainly, I personally am open to that possibility and, and talk with, with the others and see how they feel. I think I mentioned this once with, with, in our meetings. I think our next big problem, you know, I, I, I see one of our rural chiefs back there that I've had a lot of visits with over the years. When, when, when I first started for county fire department as a full-time firefighter in nineteen seventy-seven, the only EMS system, I mean, we were the only ambulance service in this county. And we made, we made calls all over the county. I was telling the Commissioner here, I remember we got turned out for a call seven miles east of Millersburg for a heart attack. It's a long ways to go, especially if it's a heart attack, right? You know, and, and over the years, we've been able to train our volunteers in rural areas to help get some funding and, and they, they've been able to respond. This is twofold. It keeps the resources for the city in the city, but more importantly, it provides a quick, quick response time to that person that, that needs them in that area. But I, that's diminishing and it's diminishing for a number of reasons. And I, I see that, you know, in the future, and I think in the near future, we, we're going to have limited resources out there based on the requirements that, that the state is, is putting on these volunteers for the number of hours they have to train and the different, the different regulations that are, that are being enforced by them. So I think these kind of meetings in the future are going to be even more and more important for us to sit and talk about, you know, how, how do we, how do we work to fix these problems to the benefit of those citizens? I'm, you know, and I can't imagine a thirty-minute response kind of for a real urgency that we can keep, you know, we can, but that's also part of this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Tim. Can I have the floor real quick? Yeah, Commissioner Dixon, I had talked about that specifically, that topic for the last couple of years, the volunteer certification requirements. That's a whole other subject. But I wrote the one, sound like the devil's advocate, but we had to sign committees to try to come up with the, with a resolution or something, some kind of proposal, anything to bring back to our respective Board of Commission, respective city council individuals, elected officials, and that never came to fruition. So we talked about what we're going to talk about today. I'd like to get to the, to the net of it. Let's, let's talk money. Let's talk what it's going to take. Let's talk about, I'm ready to move on on this. I'm not speaking for the whole commission, but I'm really ready because time is of essence. I've said it in public record for the last couple of meetings, I've visited with Commissioner Savage, with our county manager, with my fellow commissioners, and, you know, we can talk and talk and talk and talk and talk and everything sounds so beautiful and this and that, but you know what? We need some action. And, and action starts right here because this is a very unique situation that we're in. I'm actually, I feel blessed that we're here in this particular situation right now, with city county folk and look at all these individuals that are here that, that care. So I'm, I'm ready and willing to, let's, let's talk numbers. This resolution, this two, we can get together within end of July, that's what, two weeks from now?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, we need to come up with something right now and I think we need to, but it's going to be fair. And, and I'm not speaking for my fellow commissioners for the record, let the record reflect that, but you know, we're, we're in a position for we can, we're going to help. It's just got to be fair. It's just got to be fair. And that's fine, but the thing is, I want to leave here tonight with something that I can think of and just think about and make a real informed decision about. I don't want to leave here tonight that, oh, it was great seeing my fellow city councilmen and women. I don't want to leave tonight with that.
Well, Commissioner, I, I'm glad that you said that because I, as I said in the very beginning, our, our original proposal was our first offer. And, and obviously, if, if we don't have anything to consider on the other side, that's, we're, we're, we're instilling. And if, if, if we want to discuss that, obviously, as the Chairman said and, and all, but You know, I, I'm, I'm not sure we can give you a straight answer today. I'm not sure you can make a straight offer today.
I just want in direction.
Yeah.
I don't want to sit here and say in two weeks, we're going to meet again in this, in this, in, in this environment. I mean.
If the response, if the response back to the city on our proposal is, I mean, honestly reasonable. Reasonable and understanding everybody's, everybody's, uh. Budgetary situation. I, I don't know why we can't, you know, have that. Have, have us, have the people that you appointed to negotiate this sit down. We talk with our people, y'all talk with your people and go, this is, this is our reasonable offer. We're our rules. And then we can say yes or no. And, you know, and or work from there to make something happen.
Let's let it happen though. And this is, this has been dragging a few months already. And I just, I don't say.
It's been dragging for a few years. Yeah. Because, uh, yeah, every year. No, so that's what you're reading. Yes.
So, uh, you know, I, I. Let's have it where, you know, our final meeting in July is, uh, the twenty sixth. And I would love to have something that we could act on and, and sign on that day.
I think what we're waiting on is for a counter offer so that we can keep negotiating, but I, I think. Our proposal is our proposal, but we haven't received anything back.
We, we, we've exchanged a lot of that.
Mm-hmm. I have it right here.
Other than that, that's kind of where the negotiations are at. Uh, I, I, yes, are negotiating person. Welcome. And, and, you know. And I mean, I see no reason that we need to sit in here for two hours or anything like that. Let's. Again, we, we can't make any real decisions here tonight. We can have this discussion and.
Anything else? It was good getting together. Yeah, we've got to get, come up with a resolution.
I have some questions and I don't know. You know, the concern in the proposal. That it's not a workable situation and, uh, we would do RFP on it and. See what we can done provide, uh, provide some sort of facility that accommodates the city and the. County as well. And that's all through, since then, the. City has vacated the buildings, the building is on, and the building and the land. Would like to mention, I didn't have an opportunity to go by, look at the building and see that it is a. State of repair. And I don't know what the state of repair was when you, when the city. Started manselling. I feel like the. Building should be left with the same state of repair as when they took it over. So I, I don't know what that state was. Somebody. Uh, one of the panelists saw the wall looks like there's a water leak and there may be black mold. I think that's the point, but I would like to see. The. Restored to the condition it was when the city did. I don't know what that was. Somebody from the city. Common courtesy would lead to it to be that there's some state of repair resembling what it was in this. Second thing I'd like to talk about is. I have to solidify in my mind what takes priority or takes proceedings. The areas of responsibility for fire, fire. And EMS, the area of responsibility is that set for by the state fire marshal? Or is it the? ERC, public. Who has the authority? The final authority to say, okay, this is your area of responsibility. That's a question that I would like to have my, somebody.
Okay. We're talking about two different entities and two different services. All right? You know, fire and EMS don't always go together. Okay? And lots of places, they're not provided by the fire department. They're provided by private, a private. So EMS is regulated by two different entities, the Department of Health and the Public Regulation. And what the Public Regulation Commission is. Responsible for, or what we're obligated to them for is for the tariff. So that we can bill for ambulance services. Okay? I can go into a long, long, but there is not a particular area except for that we file for that on our. Certificate of convenience. Okay? And we have, we have, we have our filed. Area of responsibility is the city for Calis for EMS, for EMS. Okay? The fire department, the fire districts are in, the funding is regulated by the state fire marshal. Okay? That funding, Commissioner, I had this is. The amount of the funding is based on, you know, the number of stations you'd have, the manpower you have. And more importantly, what's your service office rate. Okay? And we do have a designated fire district set by the state.
Yes, that's very helpful. Thank you. My concern areas. If you make you, if, if Brutus makes their EMS. Only responsible to calls from within the city limits. I feel it's an unworkable situation because in the case of an emergency. There's no way that an ambulance from Arch can get to say like Turnbull's corner. For a hard time. It's too long. It's like you said, where you were called to go east of Billingsay. It's just not a workable situation. On the other side of the town, there's no way that some of the EMS ring and light and make it up to say like, uh. Your. I mean, it's too far. And so I think we've got to come up with something that EMS from Brutus. And do more than just go from inside of city.
Okay.
And we're not expecting something for nothing. We're needing more something.
All right. Let me, let me explain how that certificate of convenience works. All right? It doesn't mean that we're not going to respond out, outside of those areas. Just like, you know, the story I was telling and the story I, that I'm afraid, you know, we might evolve to. That in the future, when there's not, uh, someone at door to make a response or they're not available or something like that. And. But that certificate of convenience, basically what that does is it protects that area from someone coming in and, and, you know. Mike Miller decided he will start an ambulance service and provide ambulance service to the city of Brutus. That's what that area of convenience protects us from is somebody willing to come in here and go, I'm going to. I'm going to start an ambulance service in Brutus and I'm going to service everybody. It, it, it doesn't, that's, that's all that means. Okay? But in.
And it has nothing to do really with the areas that they're going to serve outside of city.
And we're capable, we're able to build for those areas. And, you know, when you understand billing, you know, I mean, there's experts here, but. There's absolutely no way what we, you know, what we build for even comes close to. Funding at organizations. It never has, never will.
I would like the record to reflect, since there's so many people in here that do not. Some may know you, some may not, but you have extensive experience in that field. EMS, EMTs, fire department, you're a fire chief. So I would like the individuals that are all in here to. Recognize that with Mr. Miller. Whenever he talks, it is that giving extra, expert testimony. So just, I'd like to reflect that. Yeah. And the other thing I'd like to say and. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Savage. Sorry. No, no, no. You go ahead. You, you have the floor. But I'm going to kind of attack you right now. So you go ahead and I'll wait till the last.
Is there a required ratio? Of dispatchers? For acting law enforcement personnel? We have, say, six law enforcement personnel in the field. What times are required? How many dispatchers? Is there a requirement for that many dispatchers we need to service per law enforcement personnel?
Um, I'm not sure of that, but I'll answer that question.
And is there a required, any requirement for a number of dispatch? Personnel per house owner in the area that they're serving?
But obviously, you answer that other, you know, and, and to that point, there are sometimes required, you know, there's a, there's a minimum requirement or. There's a recommended requirement through N F D A about how many firefighters you have respond to certain fires and. You know, how many personnel you might have respond to that. Unfortunately. It's sometimes not possible.
No, go ahead, Commissioner Savage.
In response to the proposal, Mrs. Austin Davis. And we might put this over here, Commissioner, where you can share. Derek, your grant application, this is awesome. You may. You may be the one. And you granted an application for twenty twenty one. You were awarded sixty four thousand. For recurring maintenance, another thirty five thousand seven hundred thirteen for services and training. That's in the grant. And then also in that grant, another two hundred and thirty three thousand four hundred seventy dollars for equipment upgrades. So my question is, and it may take you some time to do. Adjust this. Why didn't the hundred thousand dollars allocated by the state cover the cost? The EMS training, employee training. Annual maintenance. Other annual maintenance costs, the UPS number one generator maintenance. Which is total of eight thousand six, eight thousand seven, six, six dollars, six, seventy six hundred dollars. Education price on the sixteen thousand, sixteen, why didn't that hundred thousand dollars be allocated? Or maybe it's trying to cover that. And the state allocated two hundred and thirty three thousand four hundred seventy dollars for equipment upgrades. Was the, uh, Tyler Technology CAD RMS, was that an equipment upgrade? Fifty two thousand dollar item. Would that be considered an equipment upgrade? Let's say allocated. Two hundred and thirty three thousand for up, the equipment upgrades. Calls for service data for twenty twenty one, it takes two hundred and sixty nine for volunteer fire departments. Seven hundred and eighty for Brutus Fire Department outside Brutus initial boundaries. Of the two hundred and sixty nine of the voluntary fire departments, how many? Arch Millenstein compared to Dora, Elad, and Floyd, which are independent from the county. So when you cite that. It's on this island right here. There's many. There's nothing in the data that shows actually how many the county is responsible for, because we're responsible for Arch Villasay. And it doesn't show how many of those are actually. Dora Floyd. So I'm not sure how accurate that figure is.
I think, I think the accuracy of that figure is they, they, they weren't, uh, they weren't. Are, are within the city. Now, if we're going to split hairs, we'll get you that.
I think it's a valid question because all these little percentages add up. Of the seven hundred and eighty calls, uh, to the Brutus Fire Department, how many were within the area of responsibility designated by the state fire marshal? So you could say, well, we had seven hundred and eighty calls to the Cal Spark Department. Well, how many of them were actually, as I said, the fire department, the fire department is responsible for covering those calls in the area that is designated by the state fire marshal? And how many of those seven hundred and eighty calls were within that district?
Go ahead, Commissioner Savage.
Question on top points to say, call for service. This deal, this chart right here. This is a warrant entry. We call, so we'd like for you to enter this warrant. As a call for service. If we say we'd like to have this removed, is that call for service?
It's administrative action, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is call service. The domestic violence entry. That's call for service.
Well, somebody needs help. Yeah. I think so.
Traffic stop. Call for service. So. In this chart here. Are cited that Roosevelt County Sheriff's Office in twenty twenty one had four thousand five hundred fifty nine calls for service. The volunteer fire department had two hundred and sixty nine, the. This fire department. Seven hundred and eighty. So we added all those up. And the conclusion that the county's portion of those. County's portion of the, that paid the wages of the this time was a hundred and twenty eight. And that what we used to determine that a hundred and twenty eight away was these calls for service. Now, if we're going to use the calls for service to determine what we owed the hundred and twenty eight. I can't see how you can justify charges thirty five cents a minute. I can't see how you can justify charges thirty-five cents a minute for these calls for service, if they like, I use it, not just like, ask somebody, cloud field, cloud field. And then charging them, pay them extra, we're getting on the track. Maybe like building a fence, I'm gonna pay you a hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred eight dollars to build this fence. But then you're gonna, you're gonna ask me thirty-five cents a minute, being close to, thirty-five cents a minute stretch wire. I think it's double billing, and I don't think that, I can't see.
Mr. Savage, you've met three different times, and you haven't made any kind of counteroff. That's just where we started.
That's what we're doing here, we're trying to figure out what our counteroff is gonna be. So, I would like to yield, Commissioner Lopez, with those I've lost track.
All I was gonna say was, I was gonna admit, all the research you've done, and you're making us fellow commissioners, the veteran commissioners, look really bad right now. No, this is what I was gonna mention, while you round up your thoughts. In all this respect, and but going back to what I mentioned to Mayor Pro Tim earlier, and all those bags, research data, that doesn't lie. That's all respected, this and that, but I think that that should have all been discussed before this forum, in my opinion, my opinion only. You know, to myself, but even like discussing the animal shelter bill. In my opinion, discussing black mold that you went to go view, you observed this and that. I don't think that should, I don't think that should be the top of conversation today, for our purposes today. That's something that we should put on the agenda item, go with the mayor and the councilman or the city manager. And that's what I was gonna mention earlier, when, when I, when I was gonna intercede on your time on the table. But with that, I do appreciate the numbers, the research, the data, but I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's fitting for today's purposes, in all honesty. So, let's go back to that.
And one thing we've had a problem with is the data and the numbers for two months is just trickled in a little bit at a time of saying, here it is, black and white. It's our problem, that's the figure. One, one page will say one thing, and then turn around, but the next page, and there's one here that was, uh, it was, oh, right here, that it reflected that we had twelve thousand three hundred fifty-nine calls for service, that should have only been, if they look back months later, that it was only two thousand three hundred fifty-nine calls for the county.
Shane, can you give me the date on that email?
We need to come in and help.
We're gonna help the city, we're gonna help the city.
Good number to give to these public people.
We've been trying to have this negotiation for well over, not just the three months. It's just the four months that we finally sat down and talked about. We hadn't had responses. We knew these things were out, we knew they were fixing to expire. So with all due respect, maybe they trickled in, but also, we've asked for this much sooner than April of twenty twenty-two. The, the, the request for these negotiations, or the request for updating the JPAs, started before Mr. Sanders.
And I really don't wanna point fingers or
Nor do I.
Do this or do that, but you know, the book stops with the board of county commissioners. And if the chairman and the vice do not know or have any knowledge about anything, how are we supposed to know as their fellow county commissioners? And why know we have our administration, our management, that I will put up against anyone else in City in Mexico as far as our county administration? So, what we don't know ain't gonna help anyone. Yeah, I know now, so let's do it.
And we're here, and that's where we did it.
Yeah.
And as I pointed out on the very first time, the guy sitting next to you and myself had probably said through this, what do you think, Jake? This quarter bit down?
Yeah, probably. Don't use my dad's leverage, and I start making that aggressive at the argument of debate.
We have been updating these JPAs.
You're right.
And, and from different positions.
I'm not gonna disagree, you're right.
He is part of the county administration, he was a county commissioner, and he is a fire chief.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, we're, we're down to this time, time to fish.
Yep.
Mike was like, catch. We were talking earlier, we're all here to figure out a budget, our city or county. When, as a county official here, when, when I'm figuring my budget, I try to use the money in the best areas, just like y'all. If I have to come up with more money, I'm gonna have to go back and reevaluate all my other agreements, because I may not be able to afford to do it that cheap anymore. And, so that's why we're needing numbers, so we can go back and maybe plug it into the other part of our budget, to see where we can get some money, or maybe we can build for something else, go up, to cover what we're needing to help out with dispatch and fire.
I'm, I'm still with Commissioner Lopez, let's, you know, let's throw some numbers around, and let's see what we can live with.
I have a question. Okay, so, I, what I've got out of this whole thing so far is that you guys presented us with an offer that we think is entirely too big, that the county was unhappy with. Um, and, but we haven't ever given you anything back. We were waiting on numbers. We had a delay in numbers, we've, whatever, which, none of that matters at this point. What does matter is, we've gotta come up with something. So, take last year, for example, what did we spend last year on? And exclude Alida, Dora Floyd, if that's what you wanna do, however, I do, I am on the fire in EMS, in Alida. So, to me, we're all county residents, so it doesn't matter. I don't like splitting up, but regardless, I can't. Why can't we go back and see, hey, we spent this much in twenty-one, this is what it cost us for you guys in twenty-one? Okay, so every year, we could budget what it was the year before and just pay it every year that way. I mean, I know I can't make that decision, I'm just saying, there's an option. Why couldn't we do something like that? That seems awfully simple, maybe that's why.
And I, I don't want this, I'm gonna say it, but it, and it may sound rude, and I don't mean it to be rude, but, you know, the ball's in your court, and you haven't passed it back to us.
Right.
And if that's the way that you think that the county wants to make that, if the county just says, you know, I don't trust your numbers, but here's this amount of money.
Right.
Then we, we're certainly, I mean, I think, and we're obligated to consider that and give you an answer. But we have not received an answer on any of this, regardless of whether it was Dora, Alida, or Millen's and or Arch.
Right.
Or
But, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, if I may say, this isn't a business proposal or proposition. This is a negotiation, an agreement between a city and county entity that's same county and same city. So let's not try to look into profiting, or how much money can we make off the county, so we can fix a little bit of potholes or anything like that, you know what I mean? Yeah, you'd love it, I'm sure, but I'm just saying, it's not a business proposal. It's a, it's something that we have to work with each other, and us pay just desserts, period.
See, just listen to the dialogue between, that's been presented here, and the statement's been made. It appears that our negotiating team put on the table some figures. And it appears we haven't received an answer, so, and we felt like we've been attacked, that we gave bad data. We gave bad information to, as what you, I think that was your premise, that we gave you the wrong information, but no one let us know that. So you need to put in writing, uh, contact our manager and say, these numbers don't die. And I'm like, Mr. Lopez, this shouldn't be discussed here. That should be discussed between you and I, the chief negotiator, uh, city manager, and it's, and county manager, and those, and then, so, but they need, might need someone to work with. He hasn't been able to come back to us with no proposals that we can, we can put on our agenda to vote on. So, really, the ball is in your court, so you need to bring it back to us.
We just got you offered like July one in the schedule.
I put that offer to the first meeting that we sat down with, uh, Commissioner Savage.
Hard money.
Yes.
Yes.
Very first meeting. I, I had moved the, the, the JPA with the numbers in it, that meeting.
I bet. That was, that's true.
With the notes.
With no data to justify the numbers. As far as not having a response, are you familiar with this?
I am familiar with that letter.
You considered that the
Is it the four thousand dollar letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz it, it just says, they need to assess, you still needed to assess data. It wasn't saying that that's what you wanted to pay. The four thousand, the, for the twenty-four percent, sixty percent for dispatch, and then the twelve months divided between that forty-five, that equals three thousand, that they rounded up to seven. Are you talking about the June twenty-seventh email? At the bottom, sorry, Mr. Lopez, at the bottom, it says the county will need to review the requested, so that, for, in my, how I interpret it, is that you're still looking at data to see if that's exactly what you wanted to pay. So it's not saying, yes, this is what we agreed to. It's saying, we still need to review the requested information.
Well, if memory serves me right, at one of the reports from Commissioner Savage, I remember quote unquote, you said, we have got to be good stewards of taxpayer money and the taxpayers in our community. We are not ready to make any final decision until we review research and data. And then I said, research and data does not lie, so that's what I would like to see. If we're gonna pay any type of amount or negotiate, or for the balls in our court, our midst is research and data to substantiate everything, legitimize, in every which way, monies that are gonna be spent by the county via our taxpayers. So I remember you, oh, oh, Coach, I think I quoted you word for word. Yeah.
We have a certain amount of that, and I think we're gonna close the, and able to make a decision. Here is a
Can you, can you tell me the email date, please?
This is a, an email from Sarah Austin, May fifth. Member handles. It is a email, a series of emails. And it's, uh, who provide, they send me the number of calls dispatch did, from two thousand nineteen to twenty-two, twenty-one. And if you have, two thousand twenty-two each, count of years. So if you did that, response was, or you found the way to find.
Well, I'm sorry, May what?
This email was
You can see that one, cuz it has some numbers at the bottom, so you surround this response to the request. Okay.
This email, Christopher Williams says, two thousand nineteen, we had nineteen thousand nine hundred and seven five. Twenty, twenty thousand six hundred forty-one, twenty-one, thirty-four thousand and thirty-one. Debate this year with that sixteen. So if you look at those numbers there, and compare those numbers. One, and Sarah presented in her justification, it's colored gray. So in order to use justification of Mrs. Austin, dude. In two nineteen, total, the total calls for service were twenty-one thousand five hundred eighty-nine, twenty-twenty, twenty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-eight, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand seventy-seven. Although nineteen and twenty are somewhat similar to nineteen, twenty, on both, there's a huge difference in twenty-two more, thirty-four thousand versus twenty-two thousand. Twelve thousand difference. So we say, well, we need to, we analyze, we need to analyze the data, we need to figure this out and figure what's right, what's wrong. Because we received two different reports, and none of them, none of the data match. So we need, I think that what Mrs. Austin gave it last time, it's probably accurate. But there, when, uh, Christopher Williams presented this data, it came with no supporting evidence, just, this is what it is. When Mrs. Austin gave her data, it came with supporting evidence.
Which is a lower amount again, we'll take that one.
Sure, you will.
But that's not what we're here for.
I know, that was good.
So how long will it take before we get something back from the county? Because y'all started y'all's budget August first, right?
No, we're all in the same boat.
Same boat, we do, probably tomorrow, tomorrow.
Or at least somewhere in our budget for
I'm confident, knowing my fellow commissioners, that we can come up with something this week.
Special meeting, need be.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Let's do it.
I'm ready.
You know, we'll try to get Commissioner Savage to answer a couple of questions. Look, with that said, and if you have any other questions or comments, right, so I can do that, otherwise, uh, I mean, soon. Meeting soon. And, uh.
Just too late to put it on our agenda for.
Tomorrow.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Tomorrow we'll discuss, where we'll have our special meeting.
Well, I mean, you guys can agree, you guys can agree, to send a counter offer, I think that's not gonna be voted on, I don't think you have to.
Yeah, we can even do it, yes, we can, we'll take care of that, then we can work out special meetings.
My news is July twenty-seventh.
Well, I was, what I was gonna ask with Chad just said, would it be enough time between our next meeting, for the meeting that you are proposing?
We'll make it work.
Make it work. Do we have to call a special meeting?
We, if we get everything in time, we can, and nothing else, if you guys don't care, we, we have it. We can discuss it as part of our finance committee meeting on the twenty-second, which will be, that's part of our budget process right there.
So you as chairman of finance committee would be presenting the proposal to us.
We got three of us.
Three, yeah.
I have a question, Ken, um, I know that I get a lot of calls on this, I get a lot of phone calls on this, and people stop me and talk about it all the time. I would like to know if, um, y'all would, or you may not want to clarify, that at this particular point, until it's notified, that you're not gonna stop dispatch or P S A P at all.
We have, we have no intentions of discontinuing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just get that all the time, and, yeah, your citizens are probably scared.
They're, yeah. And rightfully so.
We don't. We have no one get you to do it, we have, we, our phone is, we're gonna come to something here, and, and every day will be. That's what we want.
We, I do too.
We do too.
Oh, I'm not speaking for you.
We won't.
And you know.
Rob's been working on that.
I'll tell you this, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, we may agree in principle that this way it's gonna be, we may not have this etched out words, the word works, Smith, the way it needs to be, that's a matter. By July thirty-first, but we, I think if we can come to a agreement in principle between both governing bodies. And we know where we're gonna end up, I think that's, I think.
Yes, and I, I'd just like to say that we all need to work towards that, because budget time ends, and, you know, we, we, we need to figure that into the budget, because. The budget season ends, and then it, there goes another year. And that's just kind of the, the series that I've seen since I've been on council.
And, and, you know, and I, I hope that, when, when this is resolved, that maybe at least a couple of times a year.
A joint workshop.
It's, it's.
That'd be great.
I mean, we, at least, everywhere, everyone at this part, we, we serve most of the same. Sixty-seven, sixty-seven percent of population lives within corporate boundaries of the town, so we, we serve a lot, a lot, a lot of the same people. And we need to make sure that we, one, that we maximize the taxes they all pay, and, and try to give them the best services that, that they deserve. And this, this kind of dialogue, I think is a good start to do.
I agree.
Anybody else have any other closing comments, Commissioner, Mr. Chair?
I'm good, thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you all for being here, I'm not sure that you're, you're getting more educated now than you were when you walked in here, but, you are, and. Commissioners, I appreciate y'all being here today, I sat down with you.
It's been asked about. You is in favor of working with the rural areas, the sheriff, the chief.
We're, I, I can say that our council, we're all for that.
That was a.
Yeah. I can speak, I can speak on behalf of our, because we, we, that was something that we.
That's something we can show, we have a seat at the table with the money we're spending.
Yes. Yes, and we've all, we've all, you know, talked to Sarah, and said that that's what the best interest for everybody is.
And I miss the perfect.
Yes.